Regularly scheduled work session and agenda meeting. We're going to go ahead and get started with a discussion on an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance regarding waterfront lots. Mr. Simmons?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. The, just a quick history, a couple of years ago, the planning department was approached by some property owners that didn't have an opportunity to put garages on their rear of their lots, which at that time was the water side, on Mobile Bay specifically. That is the definition of waterfront lots, only on Mobile Bay. And historically, that wasn't the way that, you know, there was quite a few on the street side where garages are in place. So, there was an amendment to the zoning code that council approved that made the water, the front. And since then, that prohibited accessory buildings and structures on the water side. So, that meant put your garage on the street side, but nothing in a front yard. So, I don't think that was the intended consequences, so all we're doing here is making those special lots that are on Mobile Bay, where they can have a pool, a greenhouse, a gazebo, those type things on the water side. The language is here, we can come back to this, I've got a couple of drawings to show it because it's, we kind of get into some semantics on front setbacks, front yards, all of those specifics, but I'll show you the intent. A traditional, if you look on the right-hand side, Mobile Bay is the front, and then there is a required front yard, the principal building, and any traditional, this would, you would have an accessory building on the rear, which is the street side in this situation. The, what we're proposing, accessory structures may be located in front of the principal structure. So, in this area, anywhere in the principal building area, it may be located in the front of the building, but not in the front yard. So, there's, there's different sized lots, as y'all know, on the bay, geography changes. Some are 80-foot deep, some are 700 feet deep. So, this just allows this on the water, accessory structures on the waterfront lot, but on those shorter lots, it doesn't mean you can put a accessory building right on the water's edge. We might have some conflicts there with some of the city-owned property in some places. It also means that can be on the side of the principal structure. What it doesn't give an allowance for is in the front yard.
The required front yard.
Required front yard.
Required front yard.
In front of a building and in the front yard is a very distinct thing to us, and I know that's, that's kind of picking nits, but that's important to us, so just wanted to show that graphically. It also doesn't allow this to be in side yards. In the rear yard, what you see in red down here, we allow accessory structures to the side up to five feet, but not, not in the whole principal area. Because if we, if we tried to do this and one, there was a proposal here, we would write, have to rewrite a lot of the code because there's a limit of accessory structures in rear yards of 25 percent of that rear yard, and lots of strings when you start pulling at it that we'd have to rewrite. So, we were looking for something simple here. Again, in the required rear yard, you can put an accessory building. And just, we put this in here for clarification, anything built over exempt, submerged state lands are exempted from our zoning code, we don't look at those, piers, boat docks, those things, we, we don't look at. So, those would still be allowed, we're not doing anything to prevent that. So, that, that was it. If we need to answer any questions or flip back to anything, I'll be happy to.
Hunter, the, if you have an accessory structure in the rear yard, which in this case is right, could be right on the street, do we have any other, do we have some regulations against what can be in the rear yard, or what defines an accessory structure? What if you put a metal shed right there on the street?
We do not. We don't control what buildings look like, very, very, in very small areas of our zoning code. In most cases, we do have a right-of-way that it stands into what people think is their front yard, so it's not like the building's going to be right five feet from the pavement in most cases. But, no, we, we do not have anything that dictates architectural style or details.
Is the rear yard, can you, is an accessory structure, say, a detached garage, or even, even an attached, maybe a little breezeway that goes to a garage or a carport? Is that accessory structure?
Yes, garage. We actually allow covered walkways to not be included because we have separations and fire codes, but we allow a covered walkway to get from one building to another out of the rain. It does not include, as I know you're aware, accessory dwelling units, which would include a full bath and suite and, and those things. We're, we do not have, those are not allowed, or not, we're not changing anything.
Should we state that specifically in here and emphasize that, you know, accessory buildings, and then say, but it's not applicable to accessory?
Dwelling.
Dwellings.
Yep.
And then the other question I had was, do we want to really allow it in the rear yard? Can we just say in the, in the non-required front yard or rear yard?
We've been allowing those, and they've kind of been happening over the years, so we kind of just made it legal a couple of years ago. We could potentially look at a buffer to make sure they're not pushed right at the road. But what happens, most of the time, in a lot of these lots, the building's put on the high side, so as you get past the house, you're dropping off, and it's hard to put a garage in a, in a driveway to that garage.
Well, but you did have in the planning commission, I proposed development that had a garage that came all the way out, you know, to the sidewalk, and if you put a, if you put an accessory structure in that rear yard, and it, and it backed all the way up to the sidewalk, you may get somebody that's backing out, they can't see the sidewalk because they're blocked by their own structure, but it seems like it might be allowed, so is there a setback for that that could be defined?
It's five foot off the property line, that's, that's what we've got right now. So, in the rear, in any rear yard, accessory structure can be five foot.
See, for a waterfront lot, we might need to redefine that, though.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you think?
And you-
So, provided that maybe the accessory structure's 10-foot off the-
The rear-
Rear property line, if you're going to define it at that, I'm just trying to, for, for safety and welfare.
Yeah.
A lot, I think a lot about the bay, about how many people walk them down the sidewalks and-
And that would be an easy thing to add, probably draft that, well, I believe this one comes back a second time, so we could draft that if needed, if y'all all agree.
We could do it. It hasn't been introduced yet tonight, so we could make that modification, I believe, right, clerk, before it's, or would that be enough of a material change? It would have to be re-advertised for the hearing.
That may be material, yes. You have to do it.
Y'all tracking me, council? What are y'all's thoughts on that?
I don't think it affects enough bayfront properties to make that, that change.
I tend to agree, knowing, kind of taking the inventory, there's probably, where there, where there are pretty shallow lots, is where that could come into play, and most of those lots are over 100 feet deep, or there's other challenges there, like geography, so, but, but I'd be happy to explore it.
But if you don't do that, sure enough, it's going to happen, just like it was proposed right here on Magnolia Street, or I'm sorry, on Church Street. So, it was proposed Monday night on Church Street to have a, you know, a, a structure that, that came right up to the right-of-way.
I see what you're saying.
There was a lot of pushback from the planning commission on that, and you set a, you set a precedent.
Yes, I, I see what you're saying there, and where I think this is, that five feet, and you, you saw the graphic I showed, where before they're halfway out, they're already in a sidewalk.
Right.
Because five feet, and, and then you have a right-of-way, where usually our edge of pavement doesn't go right up to the property line. So, and I would say 98 percent of the lots, you've got some, some land between the edge of pavement and the property line, that's still the cities that would provide that buffer, and then you've got five feet internal to their land, so.
It's total 15 feet.
Yeah, sorry?
It's total 15 feet.
It varies, but yes, there's, there's some, there's, there's, there's usually more in the right-of-way than what you see, you know, where people think edge of the pavement is, now that begins my yard. Most cases, that's not true, and we have a little bit more space.
What's your, Robert, you have a, you know, not only have you, you know, lived along there, but you've got a lot of experience with that.
Well, I think, you know, if you afford other citizens five-foot setback, you know, to accessory structures from the rear of their property, these people need to be allowed the same five-foot.
Yeah, but rear's typically not a street scene, and in this case, it's a street scene, so it is a different animal, I think.
Precedent's been set.
Well, then, if the, you know, it doesn't mean, and things change, too.
Are we concerned about danger? What's our, what's our major concern?
And my other, my other issue is, we do this to affect 10 property owners, and there's 300 houses along Mobile Bay that are under our permitting jurisdiction, so the other-
I would think that every one of those lots has a potential to have a, a tear-down and a rebuild on it.
But there's not a sidewalk, or what's your, you know, somebody backing out.
And Councilman Brown, I will say that this is only going to apply to those in our corporate limits, so not the permit jurisdiction, because this is being, being the zoning code. So, it even limits it further. And I, I think most of those we'd look at backing out into a right-of-way, we also have some authority as we review those building permits, you know, where if it, if the garage's turned, there's room enough, because they can only, they can only take up 25 percent of the required rear yard. So, most of the time, those back into the internally in the lot, back up and come out, as opposed to what we saw the other night, backing straight back into a street. And we can review that, too, and, and make that at staff level, make those recommendations.
I'd answer your question, you know, Councilman Martin, I was, I was thinking safety first, and then secondly, aesthetics as well. Just aspect ratios being right up on there, but you make a good point, if the right-of-way's not necessarily the edge of the sidewalk there.
Yep.
Just thought I'd ask those questions before we consider it.
Sure.
Y'all have any questions? Hunter? Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Committee updates. Councilman Martin?
I met with the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board, and we're going to push back a little bit, I think Jessica has the answers, we've spoken, we're going to talk about that at the next work session until she gets completed. The thing that came up, just to give it a little bit of front, was the ACE, the Alabama, this Committee of Excellence, you know, and what that does is, it puts us in a particular situation to where we have a strategic plan that goes along with our comprehensive plan, and the advisory board want to try to get a part of that strategic planning into that, so they'll be in the scope of our comprehensive plan. But I'm going to let Jessica speak on that at the next work session.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Okay. Councilman Conyers?
Just have a few inquiries into new, new spots on the recycling committee, had, had one interested applicant, one for the museum advisory board, and then the library board actually has three new applicants applying for that, that should be on the next agenda. But that's it, everything's pretty quiet.
Okay, all right. Councilman Brown?
Nothing to report, we did have several city staff at the pedestrian bicycle meeting, appreciate everybody being there, good discussion, nothing earth-shattering came out of that. The historical committee did not meet this month, and the education, school commission met and approved the final funding for this year for the high school.
And you have an appointment on the agenda tonight for that? Did I see that?
For the-
Educational Advisory Committee?
Two appointments, and one for the-
Two. Okay.
Yep.
Councilman Boone?
Nothing to report.
Okay. I don't know that I stated this at the last meeting, I can't remember if we had the meeting before the last council meeting, it's been so long, or, or since, but the, the streets committee met, and we have two or three recommendations to bring forth for the city council, and they will be on the next agenda. There were probably five or six, seven requests from citizens, and we considered all of them, and I think that we're going to make, maybe, maybe chief, what was about three, two or three recommendations based on that?
That's right.
Yeah, and something, you know, it's like stop sign here or there, maybe a two-way goes to a three-way, and maybe a three-way goes to a four-way, something like that. But we had a lot of traffic data that went along with that, and a lot of input, and we had a real good discussion, I thought that the streets committee went real well, so. With that, department head updates. Chief, we'll start with you in the back of the rooms.
Don't have really a whole lot. Y'all did approve the message board at the last meeting, and just want to let you know that that is going to be in on Thursday, and we'll put it to good use as soon as it gets here.
Okay. Hey, chief, while I got you up here, council, not on the agenda, not that it's not long enough already, but we've, we've been asked by the police department, and I agreed to, to try to walk a resolution on to purchase a 2020 F-150 pickup. It was, it was submerged during Hurricane Sally, we have an insurance claim, and actually the amount of money that we're going to receive from the insurance company exceeds the cost of the pickup that, that they've located, so I'm going to ask you to vote on that tonight, so.
Okay.
I know the police department would much appreciate that. I believe that everybody was given a copy of that resolution, right, Lisa?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Jessica?
Okay, real quick, Thursday of last week, you got an email from me with beta testing information about the app. Kevin and I have already met about the app, but if you did not get that email, I think you probably all did, let me know, we can get that downloaded onto your phones. I need your revisions to that back as quickly as you can get them to me. I've spoken with the developer again this afternoon, we are really ready to go, that, so that two weeks from today, during this meeting, we can begin to launch that in the public, which gets us ahead of that deadline we had to meet to get the CARES Act funding, so we'll be in good shape, we can encourage people to download a new way to communicate and for the new year. Pretty excited about that, I spoke with the mayor this morning, and then I spoke with Jeff Montgomery, and also the developer again this afternoon, about making sure that the contact us stuff goes directly into our Q-Send system, so that there's no real gap, and that these emails can't get lost, and they can't bounce around. We know people want to get that help whenever they hit that button, so this will help us get that. Did anybody look at it and have a question?
I've glanced at it so far.
Thank you, you got it downloaded, that's good.
I did do that.
That's very good. So, we're, anyway, we're looking forward to getting that off the ground, and just know that we do have the option, obviously, the cost that we incurred is going to give us the option to go in and revise that as we need, and to be able to make it more responsive for what we have on our end. One thing I didn't tell you is that one of the, the bigger things that would have been very helpful for us during the hurricane, was having the Facebook digest and the social media digest. It will not populate until we have that app ready to go live for everybody after beta testing. So, when you move over to that section, when you go in the app right now, it's not going to populate, that's not a flaw, that's just the way it is, until we're ready to hit the publish button. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, Gary?
Yes. So, real quick, I just want to update you on the fruit nut section, the project on replacing the services. As of today, this afternoon, they should have probably close to 60 that have been completed since the 30th. So, it's going fairly well. We have come in some problems, that pipe down there, the old cast iron, you got cast iron water and cast iron gas, they look exactly the same. So, we're finding that some of that cast iron gas is out from underneath the road, when the maps, some of it shows it in the grass. That being said, we got a lot of street cuts that we're ending up with, that's going to be on us. So, we're trying to get a count now of that, most of that's going to be on Pier Street. We're trying to get them off Pier Street, I think we're going to move them to Ingleside. Most of Ingleside's out from underneath the pavement, that'd give us a chance to reevaluate more areas. So, that's where we're at as of now, as far as the cast iron replacement, service replacement.
Okay. Questions for Gary? I want to thank the mayor also for giving, at least briefing me on that for a little bit today, thank you, appreciate that.
So, and just that being said, we really, we need to get on that cast iron ASAP, you know, we got some areas that are leaking, that we're trying to keep up with and catch and, and find, and it's very difficult to keep up with repairing that in our regular work.
Okay.
So, we need to think about that.
All right.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you. Jill? Okay. Hunter? Okay. Richard?
Just a couple of items to update you on, and, because I know that it feels like we're done, and we really are, but just kind of wrapping up our disaster debris removal and disposal. Pretty much, the roadside collection of vegetation and CND ended, really, a couple weeks ago. One of the, the slower process is the large stumps, the trees, that the, the actual trucks couldn't lift, so there's a special stump crew that's out there, and we're probably going to sign off on that with the contractor by the end of this, this week, and that pretty much takes care of the right-of-way vegetation and CND. One of the unresolved issues, because I know Councilman Brown has, has often asked, is, is Trees Cross Fly Creek. We went round and round with NRCS, who's supposed to be the primary lead on the funding there. They finally, at least put it in writing, and abdicated that they weren't, they weren't going to be in for the money. So, then it goes to state lands, ADC, NNR, and they are abdicating, and the issue that we have is FEMA is telling us that they can't pay for something if there's another federal agency that's supposed to be responsible for it. So, discussed this with the mayor, she has been doing her best to try to, to talk to those decision-makers that are responsible for these, these waters of the state, waters of the US. The biggest concern is, I, it's not an inexpensive bill to address those trees, but it, it really gets expensive if, if we get stuck with 100 percent of the cost. It'd be one thing if we were making that decision, knowing the worst case is 12 and a half percent is going to be our hard cost, but right now, the, our, our managers of our PA, True North, which is our consultant, you know, saying that we, we, we can't advise you to move ahead with this and, and guarantee you're going to get reimbursed, because the, the two agencies between, that we're supposed to, that are responsible for this are not forthcoming with any commitment to burying the, the, the match cost of that. So, we, we have some time, Crowder Guff gave us till, I think, the 22nd of December, before it's kind of a no or go no, or no-go, so we're, we're working hard on that, so that's an unresolved issue. Just a, other thing, since we're not going to meet again until after the Christmas holidays, just to kind of report on, it's always important when we have two holidays in a row, in this case, you know, Christmas and New Year's, just to remind our, our citizens out there that on Christmas week, we will have normal sanitation services Monday through Thursday. So, we will be running on Christmas Eve, and the residential routes on Thursday will get serviced, and as soon as they're complete, those, those folks will probably be at the half-day point and be out, and we'll run the backdoor service for that half a day on Thursday. But there will be no services, recycle, trash, or garbage on December 25th, and then jump ahead a week, that Friday, January 1, no services, because those, those are holidays. So, for those that like to put out, or have a Friday date for collection, just remember you're going to have two Fridays in a row, that there will be no collection, so you're, you're, you get Tuesdays and Fridays, so remember on Tuesdays, put your, put your, your garbage out on that day, so we can get your service that holiday week. And that's really all that's pressing right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Allison?
Just a couple of things real quick. The first of the new transformers was energized and is now carrying load at Twin Beach substation, and makes me feel good, because we can put the entire city on that transformer if we absolutely had to, so it's definitely nice to have it there and energized and running. So, they're working on the other transformer at Twin Beach, as well as the new Nichols substation. We did receive our final new transformer today at Valanta, so that's all, six of the new transformers that we're, we're getting are here now. So, it's just getting Sylvie to go ahead and move in on those projects.
Okay, awesome.
Cool.
Anything else?
No.
That's good news.
That's busy.
Jason?
Couple of things real quick. Church Street is moving kind of slow, but they're up to Oak Street with the fourth main, sewer fourth main, and the paving is temporarily done up to Oak Street. So, that project is, I don't think they're, Richard, in our last meeting, they're not going to be back after the first year, right?
They did report, I got a report today that the drainage process for that work down in the WU will be delivered this week, so there is going to be staging and doing that quick.
And Richard helped set up, we're going to meet weekly with the engineer and the contractor to try to stay ahead of any issues, especially when they get further up Church Street in the business district, that could be-
Going to be fun times, right?
Very fun time for us. And the only other, other than our normal day-to-day is, we've been getting a few older complaints around town. We first thought it was coming from the wastewater plant, but after further investigation, we, we fully believe it's coming from some of the lift stations from out of town that's having to pump so far, because of the drier weather, it's a lot stronger waste, but we're still, I came out this weekend and rode and walked around the school and around North Section Street, and that seems to be where those come from, but we are working on it, if y'all do get calls, if you'll direct them to me. We're trying to keep up with times, some people are saying it's worse in the morning, but it's not been a lot, but we've had, what, four or five, and that's called.
I know in the past, there's been an issue with the sludge trucks, when they come, you got to clean them pretty quickly, when they get there, if you leave them-
Yes.
-in the sun for a day or two, it, it kind of covers that, a lot of that area, you can smell it pretty far.
Right. And we've worked on that, and also, we changed the press, the bell press that they're bringing out, so it's quieter, because we had some noise complaints up on the hill.
Gotcha.
On Summit, and they've done that for us, too. Dennis is doing a great job in keeping up with that, about the trailers coming in, being cleaned before they get here. So, the headworks can be commoted to that in warm weather, but right now, with the cooler weather, we, I really feel it's lift stations, because we pump from so far out, like County Road 1, down towards Weeks Bay, all of that, and some of this that we're doing in the new budget is going to take care of those issues. Of getting the sewer here quicker, and without it sitting in the lines so long.
Jason, this is not a, a Fairhope Water question, but it might be, because you may have received phone calls today. Do you know of any hiccups with Daphne Water?
No.
Possibly today, and we didn't receive any phone calls?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. I, I had a few complaints about, from Fairhope residents about that, and I told them that we didn't take care of that, but if you happen to, I didn't have an explanation, and I told them to call, but if, I mean, for the record, if you knew, I could get it out there tonight. Okay, great, thank you. All right. Charisse? Okay. Kim? Eric?
Yes, couple of things, I wanted to let you know, if you remember back, a month or so ago, you approved CARES Act purchase of an online permitting system for the planning department and the building department. Building department side, and we're good, we're going to be able to go active on Monday. We've got about a half a dozen, little over permits up and ready to go, and we've got training that's going to happen for the permit techs in the office, and for the inspectors is going to happen Wednesday. And what that will allow us to do is the submittals will come in fully electronic, all of our submit, our submittal documents will be there electronically, so we're not chasing paperwork in 10 different places. Inspections will be done electronically, and the contractors can go online and schedule their own inspections, and they will receive email notices of pass/fail, which is something we have not had the capacity to do in, in the past. So, we're looking forward to it, I think it's going to be a good thing, and it helps cut down on the foot traffic into the office. And I'm going to ask, you know, we, we said it a bunch of times, but please, as folks are getting repairs- are getting repairs done, roofs, other things, please be sure that you're asking for state licensing and permits from contractors. We've run into four or five instances of projects being done without permits, and especially, kind of look out for your neighbors. If you have neighbors that are maybe a little older or are not familiar with, with what's going on, talk to them, ask them to call us. We found some things going on that, you know, had it continued, it would, it could very well have been a bad situation for that resident. So, please help us get that word out. We're, we're here to help them, and we're here to look out for them. But this is, this is gonna continue going on with these repairs from the storm for probably several more months. So, we're out there looking for them, but we can't be everywhere, and we have a lot of folks in town that care about their neighbors. We'd ask them to help us with that.
Thank you, Eric. Marcus, anything from the Legal Department?
No.
Lisa?
I'm good.
Mayor? Saving for your mayor's comments today? Okay. We'll go ahead and move into a review of the City Council agenda, which is no small task today. Item 5 is a public hearing concerning the amending the zoning ordinance, in particular, the waterfront lots, and Hunter already briefed us on that, so I would anticipate just an introduction of that amendment tonight. Does anybody want to revisit that right now? Okay. Item 6 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the memorandum of understanding. I believe I can handle this. Chief, feel free to jump in, or Mayor, jump in on this. I believe this is only necessary because the first MOU didn't include the second school resource officer for Fairhope High School, which, which we've had, and so they just, we just need to edit the MOU to, to have the proper language to include two, not one. Is that right, Pluck?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Item 7 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an indemnity agreement between Oak Hollow Farms and the City of Fairhope for the city's Christmas event to be held at the barn on Friday. I did have a question, Mayor, our staff, on the radio this morning, questioning how the city's gonna be having a Christmas party. So, what is the format of that party, and how will that social distancing be enforced at this Christmas party?
Sure. We're giving employees two separate options. You can either come in person, or you can do a drive-through. People who come in person will come at noon, and they will be socially distanced, they'll be seated by department, there will be six people per table, they will be, they will go up and get their food by, by number, or by their table number, so people aren't gathering at the food, at the food distribution area. And of course, Oak Hollow has followed all the safety guidelines that they have to follow.
And they're gonna be serving the food, so every employee's not gonna be touching utensils or anything like that.
We've done everything we can to ensure that it's a safe event. So, if you're coming to the lunch, and you'll do that at 12, anybody who wants to pick up their lunch can drive-through at 1 o'clock, and we will be distributing those by box.
Also, Mayor, this will be available seating in an outside capacity.
Right. Inside and outside.
Just want to let the public know that.
Correct. Inside and outside, so we can social distance.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Item 8 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of the grant award from Aleah through the Baldwin County Commission, authorizing the mayor to sign the cooperative grant agreement between Aleah, Baldwin County EMA, the Baldwin County Commission, and the City of Fairhope. And I believe that this is a grant that will be used to purchase additional barricades that the city needs, although we don't need them as bad this year as we have in the past. So, we'll be ready for them when, when we can have large events again. So, is there any matching amount? This is totally 100% paid for, right? How many, how many barricades are we gonna get? Can we purchase with this?
I think it was approximately 400.
Wow. All right. Okay. Thank you for that. Item number 9 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign as the subrecipient funding agreement between Baldwin County Commission and the City of Fairhope for the state homeland security grant in the amount of $50,000. Now, that's also related to the barricades, right? Okay. Item number 10 is a resolution amending the change to the selection committee for the Restore Act. Pardon? Somebody says that. Okay, I'm sorry. Amending the selection of the committee for the Restore Act with the 2012 grant contracts to be comprised of the mayor, the council president, additional member of the City Council, public works director, planning and zoning manager, utility superintendent, and city treasurer. Mayor, do you want to speak to that?
Basically, we're making this change. In the past, there's only been one City Council member on the, the, on the Restore, Restore Council that we have here internally. So, I thought it was important that we add an additional member of the City Council. Also, adding any utility superintendent, that way, if we're doing a utility project, we can pull in another utility superintendent if we need to, and also removed, and remove one of the, the employees from planning, so we just have one planning member on there. Jessica Walker's done a great job facilitating and restoring projects, and will continue to do that, but will not serve on the, on the committee.
Any questions, Council? Okay, you'll have another opportunity during tonight's meeting.
Also, I just want to mention, too, adding the city treasurer, that was one of the big, most important things for me, because just the cash flow and making sure that Kim's aware of what's going on, and making sure she's, she's on that committee as well.
All right. Thank you. Number 11 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan's authorized to execute the First Amendment to the PCS site agreement presented between the City of Fairhope and T-Mobile. This is one of two new contracts that have been negotiated by our, our, I would say, our cell tower contracts negotiator. I think we have, what, roughly a doubling of income now for, for each of these sites? And not only have they done a great job of bringing in more revenue for these sites, they've actually incorporated their fees into the contract, so the T-Mobile will actually pay the city for any fees, maybe even beyond the fees that are incurred as a result of these contract negotiations with the city. I get all that right, Kim? Lisa? On track there? Okay. Item 13 is a resolution to terminate the contract titled Professional Services for Advertising and Public Relations for extension number two. You see the rest of that, between the City of Fairhope and Hummingbird and South. Mayor, do you want to brief us on that, or would you like Jessica to brief us on that?
I can brief you. It's just a matter of being able to kind of rework the, the city newsletter that goes out, the, I think it was City Connect that was going out. So, just to be able to rework that, we wanted to go ahead and terminate that contract and be able to, to rebid that.
Okay. And my, item 14 is similar. It's a termination of the contract titled Fairhope Connect Printing for extension number two between the City of Fairhope and SMW Resources. So, if I understand it, one is for the, the production of it, the creation of it...
The layout and design.
Layout and design, and the second is the actual purchase of that.
The printing of it.
Printing of it.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for the mayor on that? It's okay if I ask you to speak to that during the meeting, Mayor? Should we have questions?
Of course.
Okay. Item 15 is a resolution. City Council approves the selection of Stewart Engineering to perform on-call professional engineering services for the electric department, authorizes the mayor to establish or not to exceed limit. Michael, will you brief us on that real quick? I believe they've been our on-call professional services provider for a while on this, right?
For many years, yeah. This is just to have them onboard, things like if we needed a breaker setting or relay setting done real quick, they have the model of our system, so they can do that fairly quickly. Just the, the little stuff that we have that comes up, coordination studies, fuse studies, that kind of thing.
Okay. And also, just keep in mind, Council, this is, is authorizing the mayor to negotiate the fee schedule for these services and establish or not to exceed limit, and it'll come back to the Council for, for approval of those numbers, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a change order for the replacement electronic doors for the Justice Department for additional time for completion of the project requested by the awarded contractor. So, this is simply extending the contract date by 14 days, right, to complete the work? Pretty selfish, planator. Okay. Item 17 is a resolution that the mayor's authorized to execute a contract with Sawgrass Consulting for professional consulting services for proposed more of the Avenue Substation Site Plan and redesign, whether or not to exceed amount of $39,780. You want to address that as well, Michael? I believe this is something that we've talked about, you know, multiple times in Council meetings and work sessions. We should all be familiar with this site of this new proposed site of this plan, but go ahead.
Yeah, this is for the civil work, that there's some very sensitive drainage issues there, and so the civil engineering work will take that onto account, and then do the work to, to be able to get that site ready for us to, A, get it out of the floodplain, and then B, build our substation on it. So, and then we're still working with the mayor to do a, like a community involvement thing.
Has Stewart already designed that substation?
Yes, the, the electrical's designed, but that's basically, they took what we did for Nichols and just copy paste.
Okay. So, we can't, we're not gonna anticipate a big expense to do more engineering work as far as the substation goes beyond this civil engineering work that's required.
No, sir. The design, yeah, the civil, this'll be the last design piece of it, and then it's just the contract for the constructions.
Mayor Sullivan, you had mentioned probably meeting with the residents in that area. Have, have we had those meetings yet?
We have not had those meetings yet, but it is, is on our list for after the first of the year, to sit down and meet with them, show them the design, tell them what we're doing, and, and address any of their concerns.
Yeah. I think it's important for people to know that, you know, you're planning on a, a pretty intensive landscape buffer for that area and...
Right, and that's one thing that we're gonna wait on is that design, so we can share that with them, so at that time, if there's any concerns. And I think Sawgrass will also probably do their own community engagement.
Yeah, and Sawgrass, you know, they're very aware of the concerns there, and so they're, with the drainage, we're not, not affecting the drainage downstream of that site, so that's the key to this whole thing, is we aren't, except changing the drainage that's coming out of that site.
Right. Okay. Excellent. Thank you, sir. Item 18 is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan's authorized to execute a contract with Volker to perform professional engineering and CNE services for the installation of UV Cigna disinfecting at the wastewater treatment plant with a not-to-exceed amount of $70,000. Jason, you want to address this? I'm gonna, you know, come out and, and be very forward and say I have a lot of concerns over this. This actually is authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $70,000. Concern number one is the upgrades are valued at $350,000, so this makes their fee 20%, which is above the customary cost. And I understand it's a not-to-exceed, but if they were to, if we were to go with what's typical, which is about 10%, maybe 15% on the high side, they would have to increase the scope of that work to about $700,000 to make that fee fit the, the work. So, I have a little bit of concern with that. I, I'd like for them to stick with what they've estimated those costs to be, but I, I think that it's a, a very, very high not-to-exceed amount, and I don't know that I don't recommend either, you know, lowering that not-to-exceed amount, because this actually gives the mayor the authorization to execute the contract, not just negotiate the contract and bring a number back.
The issue with this, without going backwards into the past, I inherited, of course, when I came, they'd already bought the, it's a Trojan UV system. They'd already purchased the system. Matter of fact, it was delivered a few months ago, it's in the warehouse. So, it was broke down, so the system's already been purchased, the 350 through your sins installation. So, if you put the purchase of the system and installation, you're gonna be well over half a million dollars. That's one issue with this. The other, the newer system is a lot more efficient, the electrical, the system is replacing, it's well over 20 years old. Technology's come a long way with UV ultraviolet disinfection. So, the bubs are smaller, they're more efficient, they'll also have more flow. So, part of this is, from my understanding and reviewing the, what they're talking about doing and looking at where the structure's going in place, it's gonna be a change in the footprint, you would say. So, the structure's gonna have to be changed, because that's gonna have to be the roof removed where that's going in, to be set in with a crane. There'll be foundation work changed, the channel changed for your higher flows, because the plant will be able to handle higher flows when this new unit's in. Right now, I think we're averaging around 3 million gallons a day. Plant's rated at four, but with storm surges and stuff, this UV will put us over eight to be able to disinfect going out. I'm not advocating Volker by no means, I was just explaining what little I know.
But their engineering task is, I mean, the project's still estimated to be $350,000.
Yes, sir.
Incluses of what you've already mentioned, so to me, I'm just telling you, Council, the fee seems extremely high, and I don't want to set a precedent where they can just throw a fee out, and we just willy-nilly vote yay for that. I, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't feel good about it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I have a question, just so that everybody can understand. So, we have upgrades coming. They did not plan for these lights in the previous upgrading? We, we ordered the lights before we had engineering, engineering consultation? Is that what I'm hearing?
Just to shed a little light on this one, you're, you're right. The, the system was ordered by my predecessor, and he was going to do the engineering for it, I believe, when he came in. With, when he left Fairhope, the ability to do that engineering went with him, so we have to contract it out. So, part of the fees for this is not only the engineering for the UV system, it's to kind of step back and study everything to figure out what was going on. I mean, they're given basically a black box that says, okay, go install it. They gotta do the electrical, the civil, the mechanical, all that kind of stuff to install this system... That they weren't part of the bidding for.
Okay. Thank you for your honesty.
And that's, I think, part of the reason that it's a little bit higher than normal.
But I still go back to the total project cost is estimated at 350.
Right. But they're, they're backtracking, trying to find some, some of the information that they didn't have, that weren't, because they weren't part of that design. I just want to show you, tell you guys where that came from.
Okay. So, what you're saying is that the...
Go ahead, Boon. Go ahead, Boon.
Can you send it back? So, that way, we order what they designed? So, you don't have that problem?
That's what I...
We've already received it.
I understand that. I receive a lot of stuff, and I take it back. Question is, can we take it back?
I don't know. That, I don't know.
I'd like to find that out.
I don't know if it's customized for this site or not.
No, it's the Cigna, but there's no replacing. I mean, we're gonna have to build a plan around the UV, because that's the UV of today. There's only two manufacturers that I'm aware of in the United States for the UV, so, for water treatment, so the, I don't believe the UV's the issue. I do agree with the engineering, that we can revisit engineering.
Yeah.
That was before me, too. We can Volker, but the UV system, I do believe, is what we need.
I'm not saying I need it. I'm saying design what we need, and then purchase it.
There's no design. The UV comes the way it is. You design your channel...
I was under the impression, what you were saying, it was, it was purchased before we designed.
No, Richard, there was a design for it, but Volker just happened to kind of re-engineer what the plan was going forward. So, what's out there now, you've got the, the one site, that's the further north site, and then you go west, and then you've got this one going in with, on the other side of that building. And so, they weren't, I think, the plan was to have all that engineering done internally to Fairhope, and with his departure, then, you know, they're kind of just giving this box, and said, okay, go put this box, this widget in this box and figure out what you need to do with it. And I don't disagree. I mean, that is higher than the industry standard for engineering.
Council, I would vote in favor of this if the, if the not-to-exceed amount was 52,000.
Right.
We can lower it, Kim.
Yeah, we can lower it. And if they don't agree, then we'll have to, we'll have to deal with that then, but I just think the not-to-exceed amounts should be 52,000.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's on the high end, that's a 15% fee. Anyway. That, we'll, we'll debate it during the meeting, but thank you for that.
Well, can we, somebody's begging during the meeting, can we take this off and give Karen an opportunity to sit down?
I was gonna say, if you want Jason and I to meet with Sawgrass and sit down and talk to him, yeah, Volker, I'm sorry, Volker, sit down and talk to Volker, I'm happy to do that and bring it back at the next meeting.
I think that should happen.
We, we can do that. I mean, I was saying, but you, you know, this was a step ahead, allowing the execution, so you could, if you got that price, execute the contract.
Correct.
If they came back with a lower price, but if they didn't, you can always come back and say, ask for a different number, but...
We can't, that's up to y'all, but I'm happy to, we're happy to pull it, and Jason and I'll sit down with Volker and, and bring it back at the next meeting, too, whatever your pleasure is.
Council, would you rather... Counsel, would you rather lower the not-to-exceed or pull it?
I'd rather pull it.
Pull it. I say this.
Yeah, pull it. Let's renegotiate. Okay. All right, we'll pull it. Okay, counsel, number nineteen is a resolution that Mayor Sullivan has authorized to execute a contract with Payne Management, doing business as Payne Environmental Services for water and wastewater risk and resilience. Jason, is that you one more time?
Mm-hmm.
You're a popular man tonight.
It's like Catholic church.
Sorry, I would have kept you up there if I'd have, if it was on the other page, I didn't see it.
I'll keep up with it. So that's the risk and resiliency plan assessment, and then to create the emergency response plan, this is EPA mandated.
Right.
Supposed to be submitted prior to January thirtieth, or June thirtieth, 2021. I think it's going to be pretty much mere image of what they did for the gas company, for the gas side.
Counsel, this is your proverbial unfunded government mandate right here. Okay, I think that's the case, thank you. Okay, item twenty is awarded a bid for a Nichols substation fence for the electric department, twenty thousand dollars. Looks like, looks like we did have two responsible bidders, and this is the lowest bidder. Any questions on that? I think that's pretty necessary. Okay, item twenty-one is a resolution to award a bid for replastering the pool at the rec center. The Cox Pool is with a total bid proposal of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Counsel, I'm also, we're going to expand on this a little bit. I got several issues with, with this, and I have nothing against the company at all. It may be a great bid, but we don't know that because we only received one bid.
Yeah.
And I had some experience with this on a commercial pool earlier this year, and we had multiple bids, and I don't see a lot of pool companies that are, even in Baldwin County, that are, that do a lot of this work on, on the bid. Now, there were an awful lot of people, Pat, I see you up there, but there's an awful lot of people on this list that, to me, are just contractors, and when they get a pool done, they just go out to the pool company, so they know they can't compete with the people that do it every day, because there's going to be a sub to them. By the time they put on their fee, they know they're not going to be the lowest bid, so they no-bid it, you know, I'm sure for, at least that's one reason why they no-bid it. But I just feel like we can get some more bids, so that either we confirm we got a competitive price or, or get a better price.
I don't disagree with you. We were obviously hoping for more bidders. The, it was advertised on our website for nineteen days, went, it was advertised in three of the local newspapers. We did directly send invitations to the sixteen companies you mentioned. We had no responses to our mandatory pre-bid meeting, therefore we waived that, and the very next day Cox Pools expressed interest in bidding on it, so that's the reason we went forward with that. I will tell you that the dollar amount that you have in front of you has been altered. I just got the email back from them today. Richard was kind enough to waive a couple of the provisions in the scope of work. One was insurance for pool popping, which would basically be when you drain the pool, the pool pops out of the ground. We're not in any risk of that happening, because we're well above sea level. So we were able to waive that. The other thing was, in the scope of work, we were asking for fourteen consecutive days of pool brushing and chemical application to get the chemicals back to where they need to be. We both agreed that we have staff that can handle those things, that, that would waive them from having to bring staff in on overtime to work fourteen consecutive days to brush our pool. We can, we can handle that ourselves. So that brought the price down to fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty, which is under our budgeted amount of sixty-two thousand and some change, whatever that was, I don't recall.
But one thing that doesn't do is it doesn't give, if you, if you change the, you know, what you're bidding on, it doesn't give everybody else an opportunity to bid on the new requirements. You know, those may have been barriers of entry to other bidders, and now that may not be barriers.
Right.
To entry by other bidders. So you're essentially, and I know that we can, when you have one bidder, law allows you to negotiate with that one bidder to a degree, but to be fair to everybody, if you're going to really change the scope of work, I think that's another reason why it maybe should be put out for bid. If you'll work with me, I can give you some pool company, they may not bid, but I can, I don't know if they will or not, I haven't talked to them, but I do have some experiences. I can give you some, some names of some companies that may be interested, and if they're not...
And that's fine, I have no problems reaching out.
I think we can do it good, because I know that always with everything, the time is of the essence, and we need to get the repairs done, but I believe that we can turn this around pretty quickly.
Right, and that was the, the other thing I wanted to mention, is this, this has been a project that's four years in the making. The pool's been needing to be replastered for a long, long time, and we have a very short window to get this done. If we don't get it done in the month of January, then spring swimming season's going to kick off in February, and we're not, we're going to miss our window again this year.
So, if I may, counsel president.
Yes, sir.
Pat, if we put this back out to negotiate, even though we've reduced and gone under our, our proposed budget for fiscal year 2021, which is good, but if we put it back out, how long, it won't take another four years, right? What's the, what's the real time to get it back out? And, and the second question is, why is it that only one person is responding to us as far as the bid?
That's a great question, I wish I knew the answer to that.
Okay, I didn't know if you knew or not. So the first question, how long would it take for that process to take place, for us to get it back out and get it back to us, you think? Will we still fit the time if we had to do that? I just want to, Richard?
Yes.
Anybody?
Here's going to be the challenge, it is over fifty thousand dollars, it's probably a bit long requirement, the bar certainly, still bid advertisement, so the soonest you would see it again would be the second meeting. Because there, you think, we're not going to advertise over Christmas week, it's going to be a dead week, so no one's going to respond.
Well, only one responded anyway, so what's the harm? I can get you some bidders, I think I can.
And again, our, our challenge is, is that we can, you know, we, our purchasing goes to a pretty good job of collecting names of contractors and who, you know, so this is kind of what we do, and, and we send it out, and I know that what happens to wreck item, I'll give you an example, for the fuel shed. I spoke with a local manufacturer multiple times, made sure, said, yes, you'll get a bid. He didn't turn it in, we got zero in today on that, so I don't know why they're not responding. I can only imagine that the economy may be so good that they have more work than they can say grace over, so, and they know with us is that if, if, if we say we're going to do it, we issue a contract and then expect them to do it, and if they're booked up, that may be, it may be an inconvenience, I don't know, but, and I feel bad, because a year ago, we were, you know, we got behind the people and missed the replastering season, and so I worked with Pat this year, and, and I, I will say that I leaned on our friends in Gulf Shores, they have a wonderful spec for pool replastering. Biggest thing is their pools, their groundwater's a lot higher, so they have the full version insurance. Looking at siding here in a closed building, that's not, that's not a necessary thing, and it was apparently expensive insurance policy.
Yes, it was.
You know, I don't know if that really changes the scope of work, because you would assume that that's a pass through, that if Company A had devised the same insurance policy as Company D, that, that offset the same, and then just keeping the specs that we've gotten in Gulf Shores, they had that fourteen days of cleaning and treatment until the pool system's completely balanced, and Pat has people to do that every day.
I'm, I'm going to ask you to reject those arguments, counsel, and I appreciate that. I know you don't want to go through it again, but I have just very strong feelings that there are companies, I'll name them if I force to, that did not bid on this, that were never notified. LA Pools, Pensacola Pools, they're huge pool builders, they weren't notified. We need to be responsible, get more bids. We can get them over Christmas, I don't care if they read it or not, if they don't look at it, they don't look at it, but we reach out to them, we can get them on the list, and we'll know, and maybe Cox will win anyway. I feel pretty strongly about that. But you can vote your pleasure, counsel. I'm, I'm going to reject the "we got to get this done" argument that we hear over and over, that we missed it, now we got to do it. I'm kind of tired of being rushed into things. All right. Item number twenty-two is a resolution to approve amending the bid number twenty-three twenty to add resurfacing of Brown Street from Fairhope Avenue to Morphe. This will be an additional cost of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, which increases the total bid amount from four eighty-five, eight eighty-seven, eighty to five thirteen, six fifty, seventy-five. Now, understand, the total bidding includes about sixteen or seventeen paving projects, so just the cost of Brown Street from Fairhope Avenue to Morphe Avenue is twenty-seven thousand, seven sixty-two. Richard, will you be speaking to that? Do y'all have any questions for Richard? Mayor, you approved of that, right? Item twenty-three is a resolution of City of Fairhope vote to procure the annual renewal of the support for the VMware Horizon seven enterprise license for the IT department. It's available from OMNI with a not-to-exceed cost of fifteen thousand, eighty-one. Is Jeff, it's an annual renewal, so I know that Jeff will be here to speak to that. Also, number twenty-four is a resolution to vote to procure the Palo Alto renewal of the firewall support subscription for the IT department, also through OMNI, for a total cost of forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty, roughly one fifty-seven. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I can do the fire wall thing, no, he can do the firewall. I can make up something, but it might not be right. But I heard you say VMware Horizon, it's not just that, it's to all of our virtual infrastructure, just the renewal of support.
Okay.
It includes updates and everything, which is very important these days.
Okay. Any questions about that software upgrade? Did you want to touch on the firewall, Jeff?
I've got the next couple ones. The firewall is just an annual renewal of our support licenses and license agreements, support services and license agreements.
Okay. Is that the same cost as we've been under?
It's a little higher this year. We, we upgraded the firewall last year, so we've got a newer model, so it's a little bit higher than it has been, I think by about eight thousand.
Over, did you say over last year?
Yes. I would know not last year, but the, last year we purchased...
Previous renewal.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right, very good. I was going to say, that's about a forty percent increase. Is that right? Did I get that number right? Eight over thirty-six? Roughly that?
That's a guess.
Twenty percent, roughly?
I could look back at the two thousand eighteen agenda.
Okay.
Double check.
We don't really have a choice in the matter, anyway, do we?
Not really.
That's what I thought.
We can go without support, I don't recommend it there.
Okay. All right, Jeff. All right. Number twenty-five is to procure an annual renewal of the Microsoft Office three sixty-five, two hundred and eighty-five license at a cost of seventy thousand, eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. And I know that Jeff will attest that I quizzed him pretty hard on this, because I have my own Microsoft Office three sixty-five license for sixty-five dollars a year, and two eighty-five times sixty-five don't add up. And I thought that, well, if you go and you're buying, and you have multiple seats with your personal, you can have up to, you know, five or six devices. But anyway, I drilled him pretty good on this, and I think that there were a lot of other needs that we have on our system that I don't need, my personal. You want to cover that, Jeff?
Oh, sure.
For those that might look at that and think, boy, that sounds high.
For, for, there's litigation holds for if we get subpoenaed, we can search through all mailboxes and find the emails that the, the attorney asked for. There's data loss prevention to keep social security numbers and credit card numbers from leaving our email system without being encrypted. Just the threat protection that we get with this is way more enhanced than what you do with, to get with your personal account, some I can think of off the top of my head. Plus, they integrate with our existing system. When we create a user on our database here, it replicates to the Office three sixty-five along with our password policies and everything. It's just a lot of integration with our current Microsoft systems.
And you kind of allude to security, but then, but then the very...
It's a separate license, yeah.
Okay, I was going to say, we have a firewall protection in the, in the agenda item just before this, and I'm sure we...
That's, that's an on-premise firewall. Office three sixty-five is up in the, that's software as a service, so it's not even, it's not even behind that firewall.
Okay.
Right.
Do we have any antiviral software that we also implement, or do we rely on the three sixty-five?
Well, they have their own protection, and we've got multiple layers of, of protection as well. The firewall has it, then the server and client have anti-malware.
But we have all these levels, and my point is, you're, you're giving me these bells and whistles on three sixty-five that make it much, much higher than the personal edition, but then we have all these other layers of protection as well.
Well, you got to remember, the email's not always checked on a, you know, a work computer, if they log into their home, you know, with their home computer, they can download it that way, but if you can catch it at the source, it's a lot better than catching it on premise. If they could catch it before they send it to us, it's a lot more beneficial than...
Who's the one doing that, then? Who's going to catch it before?
That's, that's, that's that separate license for the, let's see, what do they call it? Let's see, go to twenty-five.
Yeah, that, you made my point. You said we're catching it at the source, not relying on the three sixty-five to catch it.
The source is the Office three sixty-five, that's where the email originates from.
Okay.
So that license called the online advanced threat protection. So what that does, it basically scans all, all attachments. Basically, you would get an email, and you actually have to wait about thirty seconds till the system scans the attachment before it releases to your mailbox. And plus, any URL that is sent through the email, it's, it's matched against a known threat URL database, and if the, the URL's bad, it'll remove the URL automatically, so...
Okay. I like you, stick to your guns. That's good. Any questions for Jeff? Okay, all right.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate you answering those tough questions. Okay, item twenty-six, the Fairhope vote to procure professional services to migrate the backups of the old AS four hundred system to the Cloud four hundred system. Award that would go to source data products with an estimated cost of seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars, which includes the LPAR hosting for twelve months. So backup again.
All right, this one, it's, it's a little hard to explain for, to me, this, this system was before my time, this system was predates before I got here. The AS four hundred is what we used before we got Munis, and so we've been using it as a reference system to look up old data, the, several departments use it to, to look up old data. It's basically been sitting in City Hall for over ten years collecting dust, but about five, five or six months ago, it just crashed on us, and we were alerted by, I believe, Jennifer Olmstead Utilities trying to look up an old utility account. Well, we tried different parts to get it back online, and we never could, and that's not me, that's, that's, we use Randy Holloway, he's a third party, that he's, he's been supporting the system for years, and he, we tried a different, different parts to get the system back going, and finally, we just, it got to a point where we're just kind of throwing money away. So we have, we have two options, we could buy a brand-new system for thirty-five thousand plus, we would have to pay annual support fees and all, and licensing fees, or we can do an online hosting with Cloud three hun, sorry, Cloud four hundred, and we can, for sixteen or seventeen, about seventeen thousand dollars. So what they'll do is take our backup tapes, migrate it to this Cloud four hundred platform, that'll give us a year to export all the data, and then we'll cancel the service after we get all the data exported.
And then the recurring cost is eighty-four hundred dollars a year, right?
Right, but like I said, Randy Holloway, we've, we spoke with him and all the departments, and he knows what data we need to export, so once we get the system back online, we're going to get all that data off the system.
Sure.
And then just cancel the service.
Okay, you're getting it all, I got you.
Right.
So we won't be paying...
No, it's still one year.
Surely with all the cloud services that we have, we have somewhere to park that data that we can go out... data that we can go out and find it in the future, right?
Right. Yes, that's what we're going to do, is just take it off the system, and we'll have it exported. And what I'll try to do, once I have the data exported, I'll try to get them into the Munis system and into the police systems from that point. But it's time for the system just to kind of go away. We've had it, we've had it run a little too long at this point.
So then why are we paying the quarterly, the $8,400 is the monthly fees, $700 times 12 months?
We had to do a year contract.
Oh, we do have to do. We are locked into it.
And Randy said it would take about a year to get all the data exported.
Okay.
To make sure we get everything that we need.
Got you. I'm with you. Excellent. Okay. Any other questions, Counsel?
So this is the last time we'll have that. We'll pay this and then...
This is the last time you'll see this.
Yes.
Hopefully. I mean, there's always a, but if, if the data didn't, couldn't get all, you know...
The data's going to be able to recover it all, right?
Right. So, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to cut, like, the police department off, say, no, you know, it's a year, we're not going to get your data exported too bad. You know, if we need to do another couple of months, then we'll extend it. But hopefully, a year, we should be able to get all that data off of there.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item 27 is a resolution, City of Fairhope vote to approve the procurement of the spreadsheet server report writer software and training from Global Software LLC for the Treasury and Finance Department and authorize the procurement, the procurement for the software license and training, maintenance fees in the amount of $16,619.50. Kim, am I mistaken, was this a CARES Act reimbursable expense?
No. No, sir.
Oh, this was allow you to make presentations to Counsel in a format that we can read and understand, right?
This is a report writing software. This will make it where, be able to get reports easy. Currently, right now, Munis, that's very difficult. They have some canned package reports, but, you know, currently, right now, just to give you an example, Jill spends a lot of time on the budget, and we go in, Munis make a change, and then we have to let her know. So she goes in a spreadsheet, makes a change. It's a lot of duplication of work. And I've worked with the software before, and it will connect to our tables that's in the software, but it's not changing anything in our software. It's just a report writing software that we'll be able to tell, I want, you know, I want to see just salaries, here's the, here's the GL codes, and we can build a report off of that. And then you could be able to set a column up for each year, be able to make any changes. So when you make a change in Munis, you're, it's a report writer that will be able to, you know, once we set up the format of the reports, you just want to be able to update your data. So I feel like it's going to save us a lot of time on being able to do monthly reports and annual reports.
I see the training is via remote training. There's some webinars, I'm sorry, some WebExs, and that's $2,700 for 12 hours. I will have multiple people on those?
Yes.
Pretty sporty training there. What, oh, do we have any recurring costs for these?
Um, yes. It's not much.
Was that the $13,875, maybe?
That's going to be $3,157 per year, annual maintenance.
Okay, I didn't, maybe I missed that. Oh, I see it.
Mm-hmm.
Does that keep, does that keep the software up to date as well?
Yes. And if Munis, if we increase Munis to another version, this, our maintenance will cover
Any questions for Kim, Counsel? We kind of have to, we're at your mercy on these. We, you know, it's, it's all new to us, and we, we trust you that we're getting our bang for our buck, but when we get hit with a lot of IT expenses in, in one meeting, you know, we wonder how much is bells and whistles that are going to be used and how much aren't.
I mean, this, to me, I've used the software for many years on another platform, and I spoke to, you know, Baldwin County's going to Tyler, I spoke to Ron Sink, and he's the one that informed me that this is the software that they're going to be able to continue to use, and so I was excited about it. Me and Jill have a demo on the software. I feel like it's going to save us a lot of time from some of the cut and paste that we have to do of entering, entering data in one, in one software, then you've got to go over into Excel and keep modifying it again and again.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. All right, 28 is a resolution, the City of Counsel hereby amends Resolution 382720 approving the revised SCADA technician job description. Mayor, do you want to cover that?